Oh, good. I just wrote this on my mail, or on my calendar today.
How are you doing?
How are you?
Oh, is that for you? No. Matt's here. Matt's? Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Thanks. All right, let's, um, we'd like to go ahead and call to order tonight's, uh, regular city commission meeting. Um, roll call, Temple.
Mayor Young?
Present.
Commissioner Buckery is asking. Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badway?
Here.
And Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
So we have Pastor Tom Carruthers from the First Christian Church here tonight to lead us in the vacation. Come on up if you don't mind. Thank you for coming out.
Where can I stand?
Stand there.
Anywhere you want.
You can stand where you want. We'll be able to hear you if you stand there.
All right, thank you. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read a short scripture before I pray. This comes out of Genesis, chapter one. "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth. The earth was without form and void, and darkness was over the face of the deep; and the Spirit of God was hovering over the face of the waters. And God said, 'Let there be light,' and there was light." Will you pray with me? Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the gift of this day. We thank you for the gift of this evening together for this meeting, where we'll discuss the business for El Dorado. We thank you for those who are gathered here, who are serving, um, in official capacity, both to lead in the decision-making, and also those who serve in so many other areas, in law enforcement, and first responders, and the city works, and so many other things that, uh, that bless us in our lives here. And Father, we pray in the name of Jesus, our risen Savior, we ask you to send and pour out your Holy Spirit, the same Spirit with the creative power, to bring about light where there is darkness. And we pray for the Holy Spirit to be poured out to preside over this meeting. We pray that you would make your will known, and that you would give a willingness and humility among those gathered here to listen, and to trust you for what you would have to say, and where you would guide us in the direction for this town. We thank you that you are a good God, and we thank you that your intentions for us are for our good. We bless you this evening in Jesus' name, and for his sake we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Uh, so, next to the pledge of allegiance, and I have noticed that Boy Scout Troop 222 is here, and I'd like to invite y'all up to stand up here in the pledge of allegiance, if you could. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, guys, very much. Okay, so, next on the agenda, we don't have any proclamations or recognitions. Um, I think that we do have a personal appearance tonight, uh, just so that everyone understands, personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the commission. Um, if you want to have a personal appearance, uh, you should schedule it in advance of the meeting by calling Tabitha, or City Clerk Tabitha, at 321-9100. Um, presentations are generally limited to ten minutes, and these are for information purposes, so it gives us now all an opportunity to learn something. So I think tonight we have, I'm showing here Dane Scherling with Kirby Morris, Carlson Funeral Home.
Looks like Travis Kelsey, the man.
Yes, he does. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to take just a few minutes. Um, my name is Dane Scherling, and I am the managing partner at Carlson and Kirby Morris Funeral Homes here in El Dorado. Um, just completed my sixth month here, and, uh, enjoying, uh, El Dorado. It's, uh, a lot of nice people here, and it's, it's really becoming home, so. Uh, I'm with you tonight to extend a personal invitation to you. Uh, Gene already handed you the invitations to our third annual First Responders Appreciation Dinner. Uh, this is going to be held on Saturday, Saturday, February 29th, at the Civic Center, uh, here in El Dorado, uh, beginning at 6:00 PM with the dinner. And then, our special guest speaker at 6:30 is the Kansas State Fire Marshal Doug Jorgensen. Um, has graciously accepted to come down and be our featured speaker. So I just wanted to be here tonight to, again, extend the personal invitation to you. I hope you all can be there, uh, as we recognize the over three hundred first responders in Butler, and this covers all of Butler County. So, uh, we invite you to be there, to share in a time, to celebrate them too, and what they do for our county. Any questions that I can?
Do you require an RSVP?
We do not. We do not. We have, uh, the meeting, the meal will be catered, and, uh, we've just set up a certain number, and if we run out, we run out, but, uh-
So get there early.
So get there early.
Get there early, that's right. So hopefully there'll be enough food for everyone, so. Any other questions I can answer for you?
Yeah, we appreciate y'all doing this. This is, um, a great opportunity to, to show that appreciation, recognize our first responders, they, they do a lot of work.
They certainly do, and a lot of it goes unseen, and that's why we feel, uh, led to, uh, to show them, uh, that we do appreciate their services here. So, thank you very much for having us, and, uh, we'll see you hopefully on the 29th.
Perfect.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I like your shirt.
Thank you.
Go Chiefs. So we don't have any additional personal appearances. Um, I guess we'll open the floor for public comments. This is an opportunity for persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items that are not on the agenda, and that are, that fall into the jurisdiction of the city commission. Um, comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are really not permitted, and generally speakers are limited to three minutes. Um, any presentation is for information purposes only, and we won't take any action at the end of it. So do we have anyone here who wishes to step up for public comment? Seeing none, uh, next on the consent agenda is, uh, next on our agenda is the consent agenda, approval of consent agenda. The consent agenda items this week are the approval of last week's city commission minutes, or last meeting's city commission minutes, and some property acquisition of 737 North Quarter Street. So do I hear a motion?
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose same sign. Motion carries for all. We do have some department presentations tonight. As, uh, Mr. Scherling just came up and discussed First Responders Appreciation Day, we get some presentations from police and fire tonight, so. I show first on the list is police. Come on up, Chiefs in.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, city staff, guests. Uh, here to give you the annual Police Department Report. Kurt Zeman, Chief, El Dorado Police Department. I'm gonna try to keep this brief. When we get to the parts on the stats, I'm just gonna highlight a couple things, and we're happy to send this to you, so I'm gonna buzz through it pretty quick.
Widen your screen out, Chief. Okay.
Yeah, five.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, just remind everybody, our department commitment, the El Dorado Police Department is committed to providing a safe, livable community with a high quality of life, maintaining order, protecting persons and property, with an equal and consistent enforcement of the law. Uh, wanna talk quickly about some 2019 projects. Uh, I think you've all noticed, we've got a new vehicle design. Uh, we, we did that in 2019. Uh, these are three of the new vehicles we got last year. We actually got three chargers and one SUV, but that's, that's the new design. Little more modern look. Uh, we ran that other design for about twenty years, so it was, it was time for a change. Uh, that's a comparison. This is the old design, to the left, and the new design to the right. Another thing we did, we changed the patch design. I don't think anybody's currently wearing that yet, 'cause those patches just came in a couple weeks ago. But the patch to the left here is our new police department patch. Uh, kinda incorporates the, the new city flag the city has kind of adopted, and, uh, the patch in the middle is what we've been wearing the last twenty-five years. When the Public Safety Department dissolved in 1995, and went back to a police and fire department, that was the, uh, patch we went to. And the one on the far right is what the patch looked like prior to 1965, before it was public safety. So we're excited about that. Like I said, we don't have money on uniforms yet, I don't think. Uh, we had a new officer start this morning, so maybe he'll be the first one to, uh, to wear this. Uh, this is what I'm gonna go through quite quickly, just hit some highlights, 'cause there's a lot of stats there. Uh, so, all in all, most of our, our crime went down. There's a few things that bumped up. Uh, you can see on here burglary is down fifty-five percent from, from last year, but our biggest jump was criminal damage to property cases jumped thirty-five percent from 2018. Uh, that's many different things. That can be slashed tires, the damage to the parks, that kind of thing, for, for some people, for some reason, people are wanting to damage properties, so, uh, we had a rash of, uh, tire slash here the last couple weeks, so. Uh, fraud cases went up about twenty-eight percent. Like I said, these numbers are all relatively, still relative, it's still a pretty small number, but the frauds, like the online frauds, the phone frauds, those things are jumping up, so, uh, vehicle, motor vehicle theft was actually down six percent. So larceny in, in all was down, uh, four percent, so those are a little bit bigger numbers when you, uh, when you compare them, so. Uh, nothing, uh, sex offenses went up by eight percent, but you can see we had a total of thirteen for the year, but everything else has pretty much been kind of on a downward trend. All other offenses is anything, any crime that doesn't include these part A and part B offenses, they went up about nine percent. But, you know, all in all, 2019 was a pretty good year. Uh, 2019 cases and calls overview, the El Dorado Police Department investigated 2,173 cases in 29, which is an increase of about twenty-eight cases from 2018. So the total number of incidents for the El Dorado Police Department 2019, which includes cases, calls for service, traffic stops, et cetera, basically just about everything we do that dispatch hears about, was 16,256. This is an increase of about 1,685 from 2018, or a twelve percent increase in call volume. Uh, 2019 notices to appear in court warrants, uh, 3,476 notices to appear in court were issued with 4,028 charges, uh, 351 off truck route citations were issued. Our municipal court issued 419 warrants, and officers with the department served 295 warrants in 2019. Talk a little bit about code enforcement. Y'all know Sarah Hagan, our code enforcement officer's under the police department. Uh, this is kind of an overview of what she does. Uh, she stays very busy. You can see that obviously trash cases and grass cases is a lion's share of what she does, but she hits a little bit of everything. Uh, she took 968 complaints by herself last year, and, uh, a total of 721 of those cases went to court in some way or another, so. Very busy young lady. Couple pictures of, uh, some properties. One's a abandoned house, I think the other one's a tall grass situation. That's Officer Hagan, Officer Sanchez, uh, checking on a condemned property where, uh, they think somebody was inside. Uh, recruitment, we've talked a lot about recruitment the last couple years, uh, some of the things we've done, so we've got job openings posted in six hundred different colleges across the United States in an app they call Handshake. That's a, that's a way to blast that information out. Uh, there's been recruitment visits at Fort Riley and McConnell in 2019, and we attended the job fair for the EHS and Butler students at, uh, Butler Community Building. And that's a, that's a couple pictures of that event. Lieutenant Maggie Schreiber was actually, uh, showing people how to do Dust Four and lift latent prints off of objects, so. And then, this is Lieutenant Tim Baker, he's talking about some procedures we did at the police department. Pretty well attended. Uh, this is a new officer. Uh, this is Antonio Moscada. He actually hired on October 25th, and he started the academy today. Took it three months to get him in, but he's in. And that's our city clerk, Tabitha, swearing him in, like she does all of our people. Recruitment of future officer, this wasn't Halloween, this Lieutenant Baker, he actually went into a quick trip, and this young man was, uh, dressed like that, so got a, got a photo op there. Just some in-service training, just a reminder, every police officer we have has to get forty hours of in-service training every year to maintain their certification, so just a couple photos. This is, uh, on the left is defensive training, that's Captain Young, he's the instructor for the Krav Maga. This is an officer qualifying out of our firing range. Uh, we, we attend a lot of convent, uh, events throughout the community a year. This is just a picture of a couple of them. This was a, uh, actually, I believe, a fundraiser for Journey for Recovery. It was, uh, Police versus Fire Department, the basketball game, which I'm proud to say the cops won. I will say, however, the two previous events we did, football, softball, the fire department beat us, so it was our turn. Uh, picture on the right here, this is one of our officers helping at the EMS Kids Camp that EMS Department, uh, does every year. Uh, they get other surrounding agencies come help with that event. It's a big, well-attended event. Some projects and goals for 2020. I think our sig, most significant, significant goal for 2020 is related to this grant we got. In 2019, Lieutenant Detective Maggie Schreiber applied for and was granted a, a, a Byrne, Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant through the federal government. Uh, we tasked her to do that. She had a very short deadline of about four weeks, it was about a month, and, and she got it done, and we were awarded $34,399 for the purposes of, of developing a crisis intervention team. Uh, the research and some training is currently happening, and the entire department will be trained in CIT by the end of September. That's forty hours training for each officer, uh, just in CIT. Uh, this talks about it again. Uh, the CIT model's a collaborative approach to safely and effectively addressing the needs of persons with mental illness. You've probably seen some stuff, you know, on the news nationally that happened with some people that have maybe mental illness or other disabilities, and this training teaches officers how you talk to people that have those, uh, special needs, so it's gonna be a good thing. I mean, we've had, we've, we've had two or three officers that had that training, we've actually sent them to. We've got four officers that have already got instructor and training on de-escalation, and we're gonna be training that ourselves in-house, but every department member will have that by September, 'cause it's a requirement of that grant. So that's all good stuff. Another thing that you might have remembered me talking last year, uh, Detective Scott Roberts was allowed to go to, uh, Pennsylvania to get some, uh, digital forensics training, and that has to do with getting into computers, getting into cell phones. I mean, a lot of crimes are digital now. You need to have special, special training, have special equipment to do that. Just the reputation that he's built, we've built the last year or so. Sunday, he drove to, uh, Birmingham, Alabama, uh, to go to the, uh, National Computer Forensic Institute. That's all at the expense of the federal government, everything. His, his hotel, his four weeks training, his mileage, everything, his food, is all taken care of. But one of our local Secret Service agents set that up, just, they saw what we were doing, being proactive, and, uh, so that's good stuff. He's gonna come back with a free laptop, and what I'm told, about $15,000 worth of, uh, programming on that, so. But he drove up there Sunday and should've started that training today, today, so it's good stuff. Uh, we did receive a thousand dollar Walmart community grant. That's just a picture with, uh, the manager, Jeremiah Zewiffle, and that's Scott Roberts there. I don't know who this guy is, but, hey. When time permits, uh, our, our other 2020 go, goals is, when time permits, uh, try to emphasize on some crime prevention and community education and citizen contacts. Uh, each patrol shift was assigned some type of community outreach to do this year. That may be a talk or, or what have you, but each, all four patrol shifts are each doing an individual one. Uh, Chad Young, uh, Sarah Hagan, myself are doing one, and then the detective division's doing one, so it's all good stuff. Follow us at Facebook at @ElDoradoKansasPoliceDepartment, or on Twitter at @ElDoradoPolice. Thanks for your support, and I'd entertain any questions. Good presentation. Thanks.
Thanks for, thanks for the work that you do in, in your department. You said that last year there was about a twelve percent increase overall in call load?
Yes.
And that was just so that everyone understands, that was also, um, during a time when you were down four officers?
Yeah, we've been average three to four officers down for the last couple of years.
So, I mean, I know that your staff's out, that our officers are out working, working hard and working extra to try and get stuff done, so.
The calls are decreasing, fortunately, the crime is in a lot of areas, so.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, but it's, it's good, but it could get a lot better, so.
I appreciate the work y'all do.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief. You what? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Yeah, now fire.
I'm sure you're excited, you get more stats tonight. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm Fire Chief Joe Hag with the Fire Department. Um, 2019, actually, we saw, uh, we had 1,666 incidents in 2019. On the screen there, we have the opportunity to be able to produce a heat map. You can see where this is based on all different types of calls. Um, you can kind of see where our hot area is, which happens to be towards the downtown core area. In 2019, 1,666 calls was a reduction of one call from 2018. Uh, we seem to be pretty consistent. Um, 2017 to 2018, we changed our procedures, and actually, we increased our, what we call service calls and good intent calls, going out and helping the public, doing fire prevention type activities. While those are not necessarily emergent calls, those are actually also track, trackable by the National Fire Incident Reporting System, so they'll actually go in as incident types. And 2019, you see, we had 114 calls, which is actually a reduction from eighteen from 173 incident calls. We stayed pretty consistent, uh, like I said, with the other types of calls, with the exception of the service calls. A lot of those were smoke detector assistance and trying to get smoke detectors out in the community more, so. Uh, our responses of those 1,666 calls, 861 of them were in Station One's Response District. That would be everything to the east of High Street within the city limits. Um, Station Two had 585, which would be High Street and west, within the city limits. Uh, we also contracted with the El Dorado Township and the Prospect Township, and you see that we had ninety-three calls in El Dorado Township, which is west of, uh, Turkey Creek, I believe, and then Prospect Township is everything east. We also provided assistance to outside fire departments, our neighbors, forty-one times. Our response times, we actually did see an increase in response times from Station One, it's up by fourteen hundredths of a second for Station One. Station Two, however, saw a decrease of over a half a second for responses. These would be for fire responses only, um, the ones where we're running red light and siren, and the time really matters. Um, these are also tracked by ISO, so, um, that's why these are pretty important. El Dorado Township, we had a response time of eight minutes and thirty-two, eight point three two minutes, um, that's down a point three zero minutes. Prospect Township, eleven point two two minutes, and Mutual Lake, we averaged 12 point two four minutes. Our average response to all incident type was with 3.41 personnel, which, uh, was down from eighteen by point two two. Our fire losses in 2018, we actually saw a decrease in fire losses. Uh, we, uh, again, this is estimated by fire personnel, and we, uh, estimate it 429,775 dollars in loss. Um, that's a decrease from eighteen of 255,000. We also like to throw in a fact that we try to track what the pre-incident value was worth, and we had a pre-incident value of over 160 million. Um, you subtract what our fire loss was, and, uh, I shouldn't say increase, but that shows that we, um, had a property save of 102 million. The Fire Department also contracts with the El Dorado Township, um, the county for hazmat protection, and Prospect Township, so we bring, we brought in in 2019 about 607,000 to the general fund. Um, some past initiatives, some, some things that we're proud that we were able to achieve is we received a grant from Firehouse Subs for the purchase of battery-powered extrication tools. Received a grant from the Kansas Forestry Service, uh, we converted a military vehicle to a wildland apparatus. Um, I would like to say that that went into service this weekend, and it's already made it to two calls, so.
I saw it going down Sixth Street today. That thing is awesome looking going down the road.
Like the police department, we also received a grant from Walmart, um, for a thousand dollars. We're using that to expand, um, we threw a partnership with the Red Cross, we're able to provide smoke detectors, but through that grant with Walmart, we purchased some carbon monoxide detectors to help further protect the community. In 2019, we also received a Red Cross Award for Community Preparedness. This is largely attributed to the fire detector, or smoke detector program that we put in effect, and we hired two new employees, Colton Vestering and A.J. Henin. I'm also pretty proud of our personnel being able to do a lot of maintenance in-house, um, so a lot of basic things we're able to accomplish, and 2019, we had 657 man-hours. I would like to say that probably a third, or maybe a little over that, was, um, in preparing the new wildland apparatus, but based upon a, I guess, a regular dealership shop rate of about fifty dollars an hour, that, um, that 657 hours saved the, the department approximately thirty thousand dollars.
There's no shop for fifty bucks an hour, Chief.
Especially when you're dealing with diesel trucks, so.
Yeah.
But, uh, we tried to be conservative, but I'm, I'm very proud that we're able to do a lot of that work. Uh, in 2019, the city, uh, Fire Department conducted 767 inspections, that's basically ninety-eight percent of, uh, what the occupancies we have on file. Lots of times, we have problems getting into certain apartments or churches and getting those scheduled, so we have a variance in how many of those we get done annually. Uh, currently, there's 783 occupants we have on file, or occupancies we have on file. We also test the, uh, fire hydrants in town, this is also a requirement of ISO, and- We also test the, uh, fire hydrants in town, this is also a requirement of ISO, and 2019, we did 694, uh, which is basically 94% of all hydrants, which we have on files, 737. Of those 737, only 705 of those are inside the city limits. Um, the reason we don't necessarily get all 705 tested is if we find some that are malfunctioning or broken, we report those to the water, um, distribution for them to repair, but we can't necessarily test those and get an accurate flow until we get that taken care Public education, we've had 847 contact hours of public education with the community. This includes things such as Project 2020, where we go out and we mentor students that, uh, we're at the high school and the middle school right now, as well as Blackmore Elementary. We have the Junior Firefighter Program, where Lieutenant Carson goes out and instructs fourth grade children on fire safety. Um, it's a big hit with the kids, um, the top candidates from the area schools that he goes and instructs, um, come close to May, they get to come to the fire station and have pizza with the fire crew, so they work really hard towards, scoring really well in that program. We also conducted various fire extinguisher training, um, a lot of organizations like for us to come out, teach them how to use a fire extinguisher. Um, one of the big ones that we do is out at the, uh, college for the dorms. We did fire safety talks during Fire Prevention Week at First Baptist Preschool and Daycare, and then we did Fire Prevention Weeks assemblies at the grade schools, Grandview, Scully, Blackmore, and Oil Hill, as well as we've had numerous station tours here and at Station Two. We continue to be involved with the Butler County Fire Science, uh, Residency Program. This gives us the opportunity to work with some college kids. It's been really beneficial to us because we're able to, once we get them trained to a certain level, we're able to use them as manpower. And the two new hires that I was able to mention earlier actually came from the residency program. We get to work with them, we get to know what known quantity we have in there, and they, we've been really successful about hiring from that program then. Training, uh, we train in various things. We have a lot of, uh, continuing education we have to do, such as EMS, uh, EMT training, and we had 500, or 5,351 total hours of training that occurred in, uh, about 2,351 total classes. They can range from anywhere from fire investigation to hazmat, to emergency medical, to fire protection, inspection, investigation, suppression. We have, um, very disciplines that we have to do training on. Some of the training that our employees went out and attended was the Kansas State Firefighters Association Conference. We've had many KU, uh, training classes, um, the Kansas Fire Rescue Training, uh, Institute is stationed at KU, so we, uh, I believe we had some inspector training, we had some officer training and credentialing through them. We also had Deputy Chief Yagen completed his fire investigator training through the Kansas, uh, International Association of Arson Investigators in the State Fire Marshal's Office in 2019. Um, some of the other events that we were proud to be involved in were the MDA Boot Drive. Uh, every Labor Day, we, you'll see us up at Dylan's, we try to collect, um, money for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, help a lot of kiddos out there. We assisted with the OK Kids Camp, Trick or Treat Downtown, um, and various other community activities, as you can see there. Future initiatives that we keep, uh, hope to look for is we hope to continue to seek grant opportunities for equipment and services. Um, it was very beneficial to us to find those grant opportunities for the rescue tools and then to find the opportunity to get that wildland apparatus through the Kansas Forestry Service, so we hope to find other opportunities like that this year. Uh, I hope to better utilize the volunteer firefighters, help them with our staffing, and then I also hope to instate a, uh, customer satisfaction survey process for the services that the department provides in the community, so we can see what we're good at and what we, where we need to improve. Finally, I'd like to thank you guys for your support and entertain any questions.
That's a good picture. That is a good picture.
You know, I would say, I would say that, um, first of all, thank you for all the work that, that you and, and your firefighters do. I think that the, the relationship y'all have with, uh, your, the residency program out there has been great, it's been beneficial to, to everybody involved. Historically, you've had some, some really fine people in your, um, volunteer firefighting program as well. You know, again, it's like we talked about with police, you guys, uh, city staff at all levels, but especially in, you know, through these presentations, we find that you guys find a, find a way to get a lot done with, um, with limited personnel, and I can't, uh, express how much I appreciate that, and I, I think the commission does, and I, and I know that our, our public appreciates all the work that, that you all do as well.
Well, we couldn't do without your support, so, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right, that is all for department presentations. Thanks again, both of you, for chatting with us tonight. Uh, nothing on old business, so new business, um, gen item number 12, creation of a community improvement district for the Super Eight.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mitch Walter with Gilmore and Bell. If you recall, the governing body, uh, adopted a resolution about a month ago, giving notice that it would be holding a public hearing regarding the creation of the Super Eight Community Improvement District. This is, again, the project where the, uh, the proprietors of the Super Eight Inn would like to create a CID and just, uh, levy an additional 2% sales tax in the, uh, Community Improvement District, which is just the site of the Super Eight, to help them finance certain improvements that they're taking on. Pursuant to state statute, we are required to hold a public hearing where anybody can make comments regarding the creation of the CID, after which, uh, the governing body would consider the ordinance actually creating a CID. So at this point in time, it would probably be appropriate to hold a public hearing.
Okay, so I would, uh, open, uh, open the floor for a public hearing. This is an opportunity for anyone with any comments or questions about CID to step forward and ask. Seeing that there aren't any, I guess I would close the public hearing.
What's your ordinance never gonna be, Tabitha?
It'd be ordinance G 1321. I'd like to reiterate what Mitch said, because I've actually, for the first time, had a lot of phone calls on the CID. We, I don't usually get any, and I've had several over the last couple of weeks. This sales tax is just for the Super Eight property, Super Eight Inn property, not the rest of the city of El Dorado. Just clarifying because, like I said.
You must've clarified it well, because nobody came down to ask us.
Good job.
They called a lot, so.
Thanks, Tabitha. Uh, the ordinance creates the Super Eight CID, also authorizes the city to execute a development agreement between the city and, uh, the proprietors of the Super Eight, the owner of the project. The development agreement in some requires that they continue to operate the facility in accordance with all applicable city standards and codes. It's assignable with the consent of the city, uh, and basically just provides, again, that they will, uh, operate in, in, yeah, accordance with city standards. And so, to the extent that they don't, the city would have the ability to withhold the, the CID funds as they accrue and only disperse them pursuant to, uh, all conditions of that development agreement, continuing to be satisfied. As project costs are accrued, uh, the, uh, the owners will submit a, a payment requisition form, which is an exhibit to that development agreement, just showing the evidence of expenditures for eligible project costs, which would, of course, again, be just the improvements to the existing facility there, so it's pretty straightforward.
Do you have a motion?
Do you all want to discuss it first, or?
Well, we can make a motion in second, then have discussion if you guys want to, or we can do it the opposite way if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number G 1321, an ordinance authorizing the creation of a community improvement district, Super Eight Inn, in the city of El Dorado, and actions related to.
Second. All right, we have a motion in second. Do I have any discussion, questions, thoughts? With regards to the CID? We do have, um, Louis Sanders with Super Eight here as well, if we've got, if y'all have any questions specific to the Super Eight. I'm gonna reiterate what Tabitha said, um, that it's important to note that this, this, this tax, sales tax, just applies to the Super Eight property. I certainly don't want any takeaway for us to be that we're, that this is increasing a sales tax anywhere else in town, or across town, so. What are your thoughts, Greg?
I'm all for this. Have they already started to work on the, on the building, right? Yeah.
Yes, we have, we have been working already. Made some, uh, some drastic improvements as compared to what it was when I started here, so we look forward to becoming a little bit of a shining star in hospitality center for visitors to El Dorado.
We appreciate that.
Very good.
Any other comments or questions? Tabitha, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Badway.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mayor Young.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Item number 13, CDBG Required Policy Adoption.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, uh, as you know, the city received a CDBG grant last year, uh, late last year, and, um, in accordance with that grant, we are required to go through an audit, um, once we start spending money, and then at the end of the project, uh, there are two policies that the city is required to follow, um, with any expenses for that project. Um, the first is a, um, sorry, is a procurement procedures, which we do have a procurement policy, but we're asking that you adopt this one specific to the Community Development Block Grant, um, because we know that this policy will pass their audit. Um, and then also a code of conduct, also in relation to the Community Development Block Grant, um, and what these things, or what both of these policies do is, uh, guide the developer and, um, any of the contractors on, um, how much they have to pay people who they can hire, that kind of thing, so. If you have any questions, pass it in to us. These two policies will just be specific to this project, and, um, we will continue to follow our procurement policy and code of conduct policies for everything else.
I think that was my question, that was, is just for this, or was it gonna affect the others?
Just for this, um, they have a very strict review policy, and if you don't dot every I and cross every T, it doesn't go well.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the Community Development Block Grant procurement and code of conduct policies.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Do y'all have any further questions or comments?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Next, uh, on the agenda is Mears Fertilizer IRB approval.
Yeah, so the, um, this particular request is actually coming from Mears Fertilizer. They are a business that's located, um, on the west side of the city limits, kind of up by the industrial park area, uh, and they have approached the city and the county for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds. But the property that they are actually on, part of their property is actually in the county, and part of it is actually, crosses over into the city limits. Um, so after some discussion between the city and the county, um, we decided that the IRB request should go through the county, so they have proceeded with that because the bulk of the property is located in, in the county. So as a result of that, the Butler County Commissioners, um, at their meeting on January 14th, um, adopted a resolution authorizing, or stating its intent to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds in the amount of approximately 13,020,000 dollars. Per state law, because it does cross over to the city limits, the three-mile inter, extraterritorial agreement comes into play, and so the city is required to pass a resolution as well, affirming that, um, they agree with the industrial revenue bond issuance and that, uh, the county is in fact the proper conduit for that instrument. So, uh, this has no impact on the city whatsoever, other than the fact that part of the project will be located in the city limits. Um, there will be a, um, part of the project will be constructed within the city limits, as I mentioned, but other than that, it will be, it will be built, um, in, in the county as well. So, it's kind of an interesting project where the corporate limits kind of goes right through the middle, uh, if you will, and so due to state law and that unique circumstance, we require the commission to consider this resolution. If there's any other questions, I'll take those as well.
Resolution number 2900.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2900, a resolution approving the issuance by the Board of County Commissioners of Butler County, Kansas, of its taxable industrial revenue bonds to pay the cost of the acquisition, construction, and equip, equipping of an expansion to an existing manufacturing facility to be leased to Mears Fertilizer Inc., which facility is located both within and outside the corporate limits of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, but within three miles thereof.
Second. I have a motion in a couple of seconds. Do we have any other questions? Do you guys have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. And finally, uh, for new business, we have a bid approval for the Public Works Roof.
So the, uh, Public Works Department's roof is original to the structure, which was built in 1992, and over the last several years, it's experienced deteriorating, deteriorating conditions, meaning that during rain events, it rains through the roof in certain places. Um, so the, the Public Works Department made a request to the excess sales tax committee last year for funds to repair the roof, and the committee concurred that that would be a feasible, reasonable project for the excess sales tax dollars. Um, so the Public Works Department went to bid recently and obtained three bids, Stanfield with a bid of 59,932 dollars, they also had an alternate for insulation replacement at 80 dollars per square, and Buckley submitted a bid for 79,896 dollars, and Mahaney submitted a bid for 83,700 dollars. Staff is recommending acceptance of the Stanfield bid of 59,932, and the excess sales tax committee appropriated or allocated 61,000 dollars in excess sales tax funds, uh, to be allocated to this project. So that bid does come underneath that number and will allow us to make the roof replacement that is necessary to preserve that building. Questions?
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the bid of, from Stanfield Roofing for the replacement of the Public Works Roof.
Second. Motion in second. Any, any other questions up here, comments? Question I have, David, is, so this is, this is being paid for in the sales tax fund, uh, excess sales tax fund. Do we have, um, building improvement sinking fund that we use for other maintenance? Do we have a maintenance fund within these? What, what if we didn't have the, the sales tax, SSF, excess sales tax fund? Would we just buy more buckets, or how, how would that work over there?
Yeah, in essence, um, I guess we would buy more buckets. So we don't, we don't have a maintenance fund or sinking fund, per se. Staff comprise the list of projects that we would like, we would like to have the excess sales tax committee look at, you know, because they were willing to consider this as a project and they granted funds. But for those funds, we would either have to take this out of the operating budget, or we'd have to figure out a different way of financing it. So, yes, there, there is no other source of funding presently available for maintenance, building maintenance.
Okay, I just thought that'd be good information to know, so.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. City Commission and Advisory Board Updates.
I have none.
Well, I went to my first library board meeting.
Well, I went to my first library board meeting.
Yes.
And I hustled home, and, because I forgot to take anything to write on, and wrote everything down that I could remember, and I left it sitting on the kitchen table. So...
So we get it at the next meeting?
No, you're going to get what I can remember right now. They've got a good group. They're all very passionate about the library. They're working on, they're getting some new, a new system. I was shocked at how much money is out there in delinquent fines. I mean, they have individuals, thousands of dollars. It just shocked me.
I guess so.
But, they did, they talked about the homeless folks around, around and in the library. Just discussed it, no real solutions or anything, just, overall, I think Christie said, you know, they're pretty well behaved, and if there's an instance and somebody's asked to leave, they don't really argue. One thing that was brought up, there are some, I think there's a couple of tables, and like round tables, and some benches around the tables. Somebody, I don't even remember who, what, would me, but somebody asked maybe get those removed, because they, seems that the only folks that use them are folks that just don't really use the library, they just hang out there and...
Are those the ones right inside, or the ones outside?
Oh, they're out, no, they're outside.
The outside, okay.
Yeah, they're outside. I looked at them, I mean, I didn't mean, I didn't go up there and rattle on them or anything, but I'm talking about the benches, not the people. But, I don't know, it didn't look like it'd be that tough to get them up. I don't know what it'd do to the concrete. But, and then, the other thing, they, apparently, when they did the remodel, they have, they've got some really cool stained glass, they call them windows, it's really like a frame with stained glass in it, that used to be on display. Well, they're just kind of stuck in a storage. Do you know all about this? Oh, okay. We keep nodding your head. But, they were wondering, they were, liked to get those out where people could see them, like maybe hang them in that stairwell where the sun had hit them. I went and looked at them, they're really cool looking, but they're kind of heavy, so I mean, you're not just going to put them up there with picture hangers. I mean, we need to, and I don't know if that's wood frame, metal studs, I don't know what that is. I mean, I don't think it'd be that tough to figure it out.
If it's in that stairwell, it's that reinforced bomb blast concrete.
Okay, we've got stuff that'll drill it out.
I'm just saying, it's like this.
Yeah. Well, that'd be great, because I, I'd feel pretty good about it not falling off of that with the right anchors, so. Anyway, they were going to, or maybe they were wanting me to, maybe see if Public Works could maybe give them some tips, or like, maybe show them how to hang about four of them.
Do you know where they came from?
I think they, no, I don't. They may, they acted like they all knew, but, and I didn't ask, so, I bet they told me.
So we can assume that they're probably somewhere...
Oh, I think somebody probably, yeah, I think at one point, I mean, I can find out before it, tomorrow. But, but they are cool.
Definitely need to be on display.
Okay. And that's all I have. I don't have anything.
We, we, the CTC hasn't met yet, they meet later this month, so I'll have some report back on it. My apologies for being late, for some reason, my brain said it's seven o'clock, not six thirty. It's completely on me. Last week, we talked about, or brought up, the container next to the building on Central. Did we get anywhere on that?
So the information I have on that is that Mr. Schivers said that the ordinance was passed for residential properties only, but it's something we can look into if we need to.
I just, it, just kind of one of those things, it was very specific that we didn't want them in that capacity, and it just goose and gander type thing, just maybe we'll have to take a look at that. That's just kind of how I, when I read it and passed it, I kind of thought that's what it was, we didn't have that. If we were going to do something with shipping containers, it was going to be on a case-by-case basis, and that's, that's all I've got, I'll just follow up on that, so. I appreciate that, and so I remember when you brought that up, I didn't, I didn't have a lot of history or context behind that, so I'd be curious if maybe at a work session, upcoming work session, we can get that in front of us, so we can review it as a, as a group.
Okay.
Mainly to bring me up to speed, because you all were here, but I think it's a chance to, to review it and see, see if we want to address that language. I don't really have anything, other than tomorrow night is the State of the City address at Civic Center, at five forty, as of right now. If we get, if we get winter weathered out again, we'll post it on our Facebook page and reschedule it again, I suppose. And I wanted to, again, thank Dane Scherling from Kirby Morris Funeral Home, the presentation that they made, the First Responder Appreciation Day, I think that that's, I think it's a great thing. I think it's an opportunity, these are opportunities always for us to, to really express it however we can to our great group of first responders in Butler County, but especially in Eldorado, how much we appreciate the work that they do for us, and in keeping our community safe, so. That's all I've got, City Manager's Report.
So, the EFABC board meeting, that'll be on Thursday, four p.m., right here in this room. The next city, community dialogue with the City Manager will be Tuesday, February eleventh, at eight a.m., and that'll be at McDonald's. I'm not buying coffee, but please help yourself to McDonald's menu. And then, the seventy-third Annual Mayor's Dinner is February eighteenth. Please let Christina know by February fourth if you plan on attending. That event will be at the Elks Building, again on February eighteenth. One thing I did want to bring up, we did have a request from a member of the public to have the commission consider closing Post Road to through traffic. Melk individual, and kind of went over the reasons why staff did not think that was a very good idea, but he wanted me to bring that to the commission, to see if the commission, number one, would be interested in looking at that, and number two, if so, would the city be willing to send out a survey to all those in that neighborhood to get their opinion on that, that idea. So, I told him I'd bring it to you, so I'm going to bring that to you for your thoughts.
I mean, I, do you all have any questions? I've got some questions.
Yes, start it off there.
I mean, I would say, so they're wanting us to facilitate, a, a member of the public is wanting us to facilitate a survey for a neighborhood.
That's right.
They haven't watched the neighborhood to do the survey themselves, or try to get signatures like we would, if anybody wants street improvements or makes change, to make changes on those streets.
That's right.
And I would encourage that to be the first step, if...
So, that was actually offered to the individual.
But it's not a petition, this would be a non-binding.
That would be correct.
Right. Survey, not a, not, I understand that, legitimate petition.
The individual, when I asked, when I said that that would be an option for the individual, he mentioned that he, he thought that it would be more appropriate when a resident brings an idea like this to the city, that the city take the onus and move that forward, determine what the community wants, as far as a proposal like that goes. So, he may have been talking about this project specifically, but he could, he could also apply to other projects, and so I think, from his standpoint, if a, if a citizen brings up something like this, the city should take the onus on determining what the community wants. So, he wasn't interested in that.
Well, I guess I feel like we can flip the coin there. If, if I'm only dealing with one individual who wants an entire street shut down, that individual should show to me that the neighbors agree, or that there is a need for it, not just his need. And I, I mean, I don't feel like the city should take the first step forward to do this on one person's concern. That's just...
Kurt, I got a question. How would that happen for law enforcement? Shutting down Post Road.
Post Road, a country club too, right? Let's, let's put that out there also.
Well, it wasn't specific, it could be Post Road on...
Oh, and country club, it could be Central or Country Club, that's true, it could go either way, I guess.
It depends on what you're talking about, I mean, I don't know what he's talking, if he just wants it shut down to through traffic, I, number one, I don't know what that looks like enforcing that, because it, it'd be almost impossible. I mean, we're not going to know who belongs in the neighborhood, who doesn't. So, I mean, I think a cul-de-sac and some other things were discussed, so, I mean, yeah. But, but to your question, I mean, as far as, you know, getting from one place to another, it's probably not going to bother us that much, but enforcing something like that would be tricky.
It's like, standard procedure for something like this, someone would come up in front of us with a petition? Is that like, I mean, rather than going to you and saying that, that we should do it off of that, is that not true?
Well, I don't know what really standard procedure is for a request like this. Generally, they will come in and talk to staff, and, you know, we'll give them, we'll look at it, and we did, staff, the engineering department, the Public Works Department, police fire, everyone looked at it, and everyone recommended against it. And then at that point, we communicated back, and usually, requests like this would, would die, for all intents and purposes. But he wasn't satisfied with our response, and so he, he wanted me to bring it to the commission. So, generally speaking, there's not really a typical response, or a typical process.
Okay, and I guess where I, I'm, I feel is, if, if a citizen wants to, not something small, but something pretty big, it's pretty, it's, it's one through, it's like closing down Olive. I, I feel like, I, I think we, the citizens, and we deserve the respect of him, come to, come to ask us, with an application or a petition of some sort. I think it's, I think that would be, I think that would be the most appropriate thing at this point. Yeah, I mean, so the, the concerns that I would have, which, I mean, I, I can see both sides of the coin, right? I mean, I, I guess I understand the comments, at least on both sides of the coin. The concerns that I have, to Kendra's point, is, you know, we've got a request from one citizen, and so now we're going to mobilize, or the request is that we mobilize, send out mailers, have expense in doing, doing this process, and every citizen's comments or conversation is important, and I think, to Matt's point, that's the reason I would want them to come here and just have this conversation, so that we can understand directly. I think it helps us be more informed if we're, to make a more informed decision as to whether or not we're going to instruct you to mobilize city staff, to put together a survey, and send out mailers, and, and so forth, and then, I mean, that's, because that's, that's an investment, that's time.
Right. Yes, he was invited to attend the meeting tonight, and I was actually thinking he was going to come, he didn't. Show some interest.
He's not here, okay. I'd, I'd be really interested to give that person that opportunity to convince me it's a good idea, I guess at this point.
Sure.
At this point, I'm not convinced. I mean, it seems like, it's, it's a pretty big move, I mean, Post Road's...
Well, I also feel like if, staff has already said it's not a workable option. I mean, you've talked to all the departments involved, right?
Yes.
And it was pretty much, no, it won't work.
Yeah, I mean, we, we didn't, we couldn't come up with a really good way of doing it. I mean, obviously, you could, you could put up a type three barricade on either Country Club or Main, or you could do a cul-de-sac, but we don't, we didn't, I think either of those solutions were viable, and given the fact that this is the only through road between McCollum and Twelve.
What is a type three barricade?
So a type three barricade would be...
Like what, a Normandy or something?
No.
Big crossmembers?
I don't really need to know.
You want a picture?
No.
They're just, it's like one of those barricades with like three boards, with the caution boards.
Like permanent, like it's permanently, it would be just like cones.
You would, no, 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 yeah, this would be a permanently placed...
Well, that's really attractive in your neighborhood.
Right.
I'm not, I guess, country club. I, the gist of what I'm hearing is that we're not prepared at this time to instruct staff to go forward with a community survey about closing Post Road. That would be the directive, I think, at this point.
I think you've done all you could do, and we're done with it. Because once you open this door, other people are going to want that in their neighborhoods.
Douglas Road's going to want to close it down if we do Post Road, guarantee it.
It's going to happen all over town.
A brand new road?
I tell you, I do.
The general would actually think that would be actually a good idea.
To not be able to navigate through a town.
Right. He thinks that many, many neighborhoods in our community could be improved by shutting down the street to, to through traffic. His hope would be that if the commission would do this, there would be other neighborhoods that would make this request, and so that we could, we could do that as well.
Okay.
Oh, he's got a big plan involved, though.
I guess so.
At this point, so I think the consensus at this point, if, if the requister has, would like to further request this, he probably needs to come here and have a conversation so that we can understand.
Okay. And the last thing I have is on February twentieth, at six p.m., the Chamber is having their annual celebration, or annual review of business meeting. Does anyone want to attend that, so we can get tickets? Again, February twentieth, six p.m., I can send it an email, but I want to make sure...
What night of the week is it?
Be a Thursday.
I think it's a Thursday night.
It's the eighteenth of May.
Yes, because the eighteenth is Tuesday.
It's a busy week.
Yes, it's a Thursday night.
Yeah.
It's a one.
Yeah, I'll take one, too.
Okay, I'll let you know. I'll let you know.
I'll send it out to my...
What's the twelve?
Mary's Day is at four thirteen.
I know, but there, I thought somebody said, what's going on the twelve?
Twelve.
Hold on. Twelve. There's something.
That's a work session.
Work session. Nah, there was, I thought somebody said there was something.
The eleventh is the community chat.
That's it, the eleventh, okay.
And the twelfth is work session.
The EFABC board.
Oh, and I...
Okay, would that be me and Kendra for right now?
Cindy's coming in from east...
I know, it's me.
Kansas City. I'll have to go get her.
I, I was thinking...
I'll find out, for sure.
I think we left that one up for grab.
I think you, you're on the EFABC.
No, Dave, you guys appointed him as the alternate.
Right.
Bill and Kendra are the members.
And that's at four?
They, they were going to ask you eventually, but I don't know.
You weren't there, so...
I think they would have appointed you as the alternate.
Okay.
We had that talk, and I knew you were both here. All right. What else you got?
It's all done.
We originally on the agenda had an executive session, we're canceling that for tonight, we don't have a need to move into executive session, so, before we, before I consider motion of adjournment, I want to, again, thank Troop Two Twenty-Two for hanging out with us tonight. I know it was a super exciting meeting.
Oh, actually, I might say something about that. So the reason they're here, they are all working on their citizenship in the Community Mayor Badge.
Nice.
One of the requirements that that Mayor Badge requires is they have to attend a meeting such as this, and kind of observe what's going on, and they will have to actually probably prepare a report or something. So, this is part of a, and actually, that Mayor Badge is important, because it's actually one of the required Mayor badges for their Eagle Scout rank, so all of these Scouts are moving forward with their path to their Eagle Scout.
Do you all have any questions for the mayor?
Good job, Nick.
Thanks, Nick. So, I, again, I think it's great that you all came out. I would encourage you, anytime you want to come to one of these meetings, whether the first and third Mondays, it's always great to have, it's always great to have any member of the community here, and it's, it's especially awesome to have youth here and to show that kind of interest. So if you have a desire to attend any future meetings, come on out, and after we adjourn, we'll hang out if any, we...
They're usually a lot more fun than this. They're usually a lot more fun than this one.
After we do adjourn, I'll hang out if there are any questions, and if not, I'm gonna go home and go to bed, so. I'd consider a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Our motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries five oh. Thank you.
Is President...